I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we do have a big crowd tonight, there is a public sign up sheet. If you would like to speak, please sign up and we'll go in order. Glenn, did you want to put that down there? Gentlemen, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
No, sir.
Actually, we do have one.
Yes.
We have one.
Commissioners, I have prepared a motion to fill a vacancy on the Potomac Highlands Airport Authority Board. If you're okay with that, Commissioners, we can add that as item number 17 under the consent agenda.
Seventeen.
Sounds good.
So moved. I don't think we need a motion for that. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item number one is our Frostburg Lodge 470. It's the 40th Derby Day. Dale?
We think Jake would fit in one of those derby cars.
Brian, please. Yeah, please, gentlemen. Should we leave Dennis at home this year?
Yes. We're pleased to be here this evening. I'd like to introduce my fellow officers that are here with me today. First of all, Larry Wiseman, who is the co-chair along with his wife Vicki of the 40th Annual Frostburg Elks Derby Day. Second is Chuck Bond, who's a trustee in the Frostburg Elks. And third, I think, is the gentleman you recognize, Brian Westfall. And Brian's just about everything we have going on there. He leads our fundraising for the Elks National Foundation. He's very much involved with our scouting efforts. And I understand he spends a few hours working here at the county with HR issues as well during the week. So Brian's a past exiled ruler of our lodge. We're very proud of the work that he does for us. We're here this evening, I understand, to receive a contribution from the county commissioners. I think I'd like to go back just a little bit and explain the history of our event. This is the 40th Annual Frostburg Elks Derby Day. And the Frostburg Elks Derby Day was the brainchild of Frostburg businessman, longtime Frostburg businessman Al Vi. And I'm sure many of you remember Al Vi. And he had a wonderful Italian restaurant, and he did some great things in the community, including the Vicki Vi Dotson Leukemia Celebrity Golf Tournament for many years that brought a lot of recognition to the community. But Al's idea was to do two or three things. First of all, to have an event that would be patriotic, and therefore, we have it on the Fourth of July weekend every year. Something that we can show pride in our community, our country, and also the veterans that serve our country. And second was to create an opportunity for parents to work with their children, to bond with their children. And what better way to do it than to spend countless hours building a car, painting a car, practicing how to drive these contraptions? And in the early years, they didn't have steering wheels. They just had ropes. And they still went down Main Street. And they didn't have brakes. They ran into hay bales to stop. Now they have brakes, and they have steering wheels, and we use frame wrap instead of paint. And they're much different, but still, the bonding between parents and children is still there. And they share in victory and also share the desperation of defeat. And it's just a wonderful event that accomplishes all these goals. And we're proud as Elks to sponsor that event again for the 40th year. And we're proud to have Allegheny County and the Allegheny County Commissioners as our partners. Thank you.
Right. Pappy, too.
Thank you, gentlemen. It's a fantastic event. It's always a good time to go up, and you do get quite a crowd. I'd say at least 3,000 to 4,000 people there for every time I've been there. So I usually have somebody that's racing, so I kind of stay impartial and stay up in the pit area.
Hope to see you there.
Yes.
Well, come on up. We have a...
It seems right here. Wrapping the wrong way.
It's tomorrow, Larry.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, sir.
Even though you were in the air from six to midnight, I'd say six in the morning to midnight, a few hours.
You want me to go? Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, if we can move out of order ever so slightly and jump to our consent agenda under item number 12 with a $1,000 award from the county's community promotions account to support the Frostburgs' Elk Derby Day. So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Alrighty, back to item number two. Sierra, and the students of our Montessori school have done some serious recycling this year.
Yeah. So this year was the 24th Annual Telephone Book Recycling Campaign, and we collected 4,766 telephone books.
Wow.
So we have, this is organized by the Allegheny County Commissioners, the Allegheny County Solid Waste Management Board, and the Board of Education. And students in public and private schools are invited to participate and collect telephone books for the month of April. The awards are based on a ratio of telephone books per student enrolled at the school. And this year, Beginnings Montessori, they've got our top ratio of 4.79 telephone books per student. So that's really great. Thanks, guys. And this year, we had four sponsors for the campaign, which were Advanced Disposal, Mountain View Landfill Waste Management Company, Queen City Business Systems, and the Western Maryland Health System. So I want to thank our sponsors. The county didn't even have to contribute to this campaign. Normally, we put in a little, but this year, yeah. So I appreciate their generous support. So do you guys want to say who you are?
Sure. Hi, I'm Tara Keller-Meyer, and I'm the Vice President of Beginnings Montessori School. I've been there since forever, it seems. We're a small school that has been in the community since 1978. And it started as mostly just a preschool, and we've expanded to become a preschool and a lower, and then again, we expanded again to be an upper elementary school. We're currently located at Canal Place. This is Jessica Hook. She is our primary teacher, which is our version of preschool and kindergarten. And then Megan Mason, she's our head of school, so she's in charge of everything. And she's also our lead upper elementary teacher. And then these are some kids. This gentleman will be leaving us soon. And these young ladies have been in our little primary school, and they all were like, I mean, when I tell you, they were looking for phone books everywhere. Abandoned houses, friends, families, neighbors, they were on. So we were really grateful to be part of this program and thankful that it was a ratio so a small school like ours actually had a chance to actually win. So thank you, everybody.
Great.
Thank you, sir. Very much.
Yeah, come on up. Let's get a picture.
Yeah.
If everybody could look a little bit together.
You're going to Ella's now.
I'm with Ella. Look, 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 this is Ella's brother.
Oh, do you know Ella?
So, yeah.
She's a little jive.
A little bit.
Come up a little bit. I wanted to get these guys in the center.
Wait till we're ready.
Right under here. This is to Beginning Montessori School, Recycling 2015/2016 Telephone Book Recycling Champion. Congratulations from the county commissioners.
There we go.
Yeah, that's perfect.
That's sweet.
Cut us out and get the kids.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're so welcome.
Thank you for that, Sarah. This is a great job.
That's yours.
We get to keep it. We'll display it.
That's just like one of those recycled phone books.
Follow us here. Thank you.
Item number three is Resolution 16-11, Rocky Gap's Proceeds Allocation. Mr. Bennett.
Good evening, Commissioners. As you know, we're required by state laws to convene the local development council to come up with a plan on how we spend the slots proceeds from Rocky Gap that we get. And we last updated this plan with you guys back in December. Since then, our committee's met again this spring, and we've come up with a few tweaks to the existing allocation plan that we're looking for approval for tonight. Before I go into explaining what's in this, we do have a couple of members of the committee present tonight. Sheriff Robertson's back there, Delegate McKay's back there, see Delegate Buckle. I don't think I missed anyone. So...
Yourself.
And myself, and Bill Rudd assists us.
I'm sorry.
He'll come.
We're sorry for that.
He doesn't say much there either.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Good job, Bill.
So tonight, what we have is a few changes based on the committee's recommendations. One would be simply to move the sunset date of this out to December 31st, 2016. Right now, it's June 30. Second one would be to allocate $15,000 to the Western Maryland Food Bank, and that would be after we exceed the $1,014,000 annually, which we did last year. The last change would be to allow all remaining dollars that we get to continue to flow to the fire companies. So we anticipate being somewhere in the vicinity of $1.1 million this year. If that pans out, we'll end up giving $360,000 to Allegheny College, $200,000 to Frostburg State, $80,000 to stay in our PEGO funds for capital, $80,000 for Board of Ed capital projects, $15,000 to the food banks, and then a total of $374,000 to the fire companies.
But that number to them can increase if it...
Yeah. So in fact, fiscal '17's budget is 1.4 million. That's what the state identified to us, and that's what we're using. Under that scenario, we'd have almost $700,000 going to the fire companies.
Very good.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Makes a good funding stream for...
It's a good plan, and yeah. And we'll continue to convene. We'll convene again in the fall and look at the plan again. So tonight, we're simply looking for your approval.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Item number four is our water quality loans, Bedford Road and Barrowville.
So what this resolution is, is authorization to close on two MDE loans for two different water and sewer projects that we have going on that we've talked about a lot. It's for $375,000 in total. Both of these projects were originally authorized with Bond Bill 5-15 last year. The first one's Bedford Road Phase Four Mill Run Sanitary Improvement. That's for $175,000. And that's part of a package. It's an $875,000 grant, $175,000 loan. The second project, Barrowville Water, which we've talked about a lot, is for $200,000 in total. Of that 200, $100,000 is what MDE calls loan forgiveness. So as soon as we close the loan, it's essentially a grant. It's forgiven. So it ends up being $100,000 to those residents. Both are going to be at a 20-year term and approximately 1% interest. We'll know that as we actually close in July, and it'll be completely paid for by the users of the system as usual with these projects. So just looking for your approval on this one.
Right. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And item number five, the trifecta.
See if I can go three for three here.
That's right. Fiscal '16 budget amendments.
Okay. So tonight, we have five amendments in total for your review, total of $6.7 million. And the first and biggest of those budget amendments is use of our fund balance. All three things we've talked about previously, and you've approved in some manner previously. This formalizes them in the budget and allows me to move the money to the appropriate accounts. So it'd be $250,000 to be allocated for some stormwater issues we had a couple of years ago in Bowling Green and Crescent Town. So this sets aside the money and allows us to use it. $1.9 million for the emergency management communication upgrade. That's for the 911 consoles and alerting system. And we actually awarded that in October. So this has just simply allowed me to go ahead and pull the money out of fund balance to pay for the project. And the last and biggest piece is one we've talked about at great length, is $4 million out of fund balance to fund Allegheny High School. So that takes our total funding for Allegheny High to 13.7 million. And we did that in two different pieces. January 15 and October of 15, we talked about moving money. So this formalizes it. It'll allow us to move this on out of fund balance and into those capital projects. So that's the first budget amendment. Second one would be our vacation buyback. We do this every year as a way to try to reduce our compensated absences liability. This year was $123,000. 71 employees utilize this program. And this will simply allow us to spread the money from our income tax, which is performing better than what we budgeted for fiscal '17. So new income tax money will pay for this. The third one, the sheriff was here and had a toy to display, I guess back in the fall, that he was able to sell. Thankfully, his antique guns sold for $30,000, and he's going to utilize those funds to help Quikness Guys. So this will enable him to have the money in his budget. Fourth item we have is $110,000 for EMS life packs. This is part of a grant program through the state. We're simply facilitating it. So we paid for them upfront. State gives us their share, and four local fire departments are providing their match. So this will amend the EMS budget by 110 grand to account for that. Fifth item we have, we've talked during this budget process, is workers' comp. Workers' comp's an area that's hit us really hard, especially over the past few years. This year, we look to be out over budget by about $342,000 at this point. It's almost entirely from four departments, sheriff's department, the detention center, and Rose, three departments, sorry, not four. They're all over budget. We have extra income tax money, thankfully, based on revised estimates, so we can use extra income tax money to pay for that. That would simply allow those budgets to be replenished a little bit. So those are our five amendments tonight. It'll take our original budget from last year of 84.5 million and make it about 91 million. And this will leave our fund balance still in good condition. As we've talked about, we're going to be just slightly over our goal of having two months worth of operating. So we're really right where we need to be. So just looking for your approval on these.
Great.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think we've already talked almost all of these items over, so I make a motion that we accept this.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, I thought Commissioner Brody got a better deal on that submachine gun than 30,000.
I thought I did. Well, I will give, the sheriff was a man of his word. I did get to fire it. It was something I always wanted to do, so...
Item number six is our ARC priorities. Mr. Nedbit.
Hello, Commissioners. As we discussed on May 5, we went over the ARC priorities. We have to submit our ARC priorities to Tri-County Council by May 20. That's why we're asking for authorization to send the priority list to them. They will then take the list and combine it with lists that they, priority list that they received from Garrett County and from Washington County. And they'll combine the list, and then there, the overall list will be approved at their June 22 council meeting. At this point, I'm just asking for authorization to transmit the priority list that was already discussed on May 5.
Is there any discussion?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Counselor, I do have just a little something to say on that, since I know that Bill was the president of Tri-County Council. I most certainly hope that when he pushes us up the ladder, they leave it in the way that it's prioritized, because one of the projects of last year, effort made through us, through Tri-County Council, then was removed at the last minute and really hurt one of our little municipalities. And that really disturbed me, that they did that after. It's supposed to go through this process for a reason, and then when it gets to where it's going, and someone decides that that's not a project viable, then it, what's the sense of prioritizing it and us going through all the work and everyone approving it for someone else to change it then? So I'm not done with that one yet either. So thank you, sir.
Item number seven is CDBG application for the Sunnyside and Prince Albert Water Project.
This is another one of those cases where we've already had a discussion about it. On April 28, we held a public hearing for this project. Again, this is, this is the Barrowville project. It's being called Barrowville in some cases. In this case, it's the Prince Albert area. Before, I have to submit an application for CDBG funding by June 3. But before I can do that, I have to get a resolution passed that will be included with the application. That's what I'm asking the Commissioners to do today, is authorize that resolution so it can be included with the application.
Much needed.
Yes. So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Mr. Bennett. Item number eight is our Cumberland Area Unified Planning Program. Mrs. Wigfield.
Different hand. So the Cumberland Area Unified Planning Work Program for fiscal year 2016 outlines transportation planning activities to be managed by the Cumberland Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. It includes the core planning elements, which is things like our Transportation Improvement Plan. I have you amend it on occasion. And administration of the program, and nine special studies. I'm requesting that the Commissioners acting as the Cumberland Metropolitan Planning Organization adopt the resolution, and then we can send it on to the Federal Highway Administration, Federal Transit Administration for their approval. And I also like to mention that the public comment period opens today, and it goes on for 30 days from this period.
Great. Is there any discussion?
None, sir.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item number nine.
All right. Another plan. So we had our public hearing for the water and sewer plan. This is a comprehensive update of the plan for 2016. So we had the public hearing on March 24, and the final step is to see this resolution from you guys to send on to MDE. This plan helps us continue getting funding for water and sewer projects. So I'm asking you guys to adopt the plan.
All yours. I'll make a motion. Will you adopt?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sierra. Item number 10, we're moving to our public hearing. This is the third public hearing on our 2017 budget.
As you know, we presented a balanced budget back on April 28. We had, that technically was our first public hearing. We had another public hearing on May the 5, and tonight will simply be our third public hearing, and a chance for either you guys to comment or anyone from the public to comment on our budget. As of now, it's a balanced budget, 86.2 million, and we're planning on adoption on June 2. So it's really it for me. Open enough to any comment at this point.
Is there any public comment at this time?
Where can you get a copy of it? Preliminary budget's on our website now. Our adopted budget, once we adopt June 2, will be available on the website within a couple of days after June 2. Well, we do have some limited copies, and I can get you a copy of preliminary budget.
Thanks.
Yep. That's it?
All right.
I don't think we spoke enough on this thing.
Yeah, we've talked about it a lot. Yep. Thanks, guys.
That's fine. Thanks, Jason. Item number 11, Mr. Everly.
Commissioners, under our consent agenda this evening, item number 11 is a motion to appoint and reappoint members to the Region 1 EMS Advisory Council with those terms expiring on January the 15, 2019. Item 13 is a motion authorizing the Board of Commissioners to contribute $1,000 from the county's Community Promotions Fund to support the annual Tri-State Wingoff Festival. Item 14 is a motion to adopt Resolution 1610 to amend the county's rules and regs to prohibit the use of e-cigarettes throughout the county's workplace and vehicles. Item 15 is a motion authorizing the Board of Commissioners to direct staff to complete a deed of transfer of county-owned property to the city of Frostburg, which encompasses the Hoffman Ball Field property. This property was recently annexed by the city of Frostburg. Item 16 is a motion to award the purchase of a multiflyed asphalt to Hammacher East out of Chambersburg to support the county's annual chip seal program. And item 17 is a motion which was added earlier this evening to fill a vacancy on the Potomac Highlands Airport Authority Board. The appointment would be for James R. Piles of Lavelle to fill the unexpired term of Dave Nepper, who recently resigned from the Potomac Highlands Airport Authority Board. Commissioners, that's all I have under your consent agenda this evening.
Any discussion?
Pretty cut and dry. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioners, under my report tonight, I'd like to recognize and perhaps even embarrass Matt Miller, who's here tonight from the Chili Cook-Off Group, the J.C.'s. If you'd like to come forward and take just a few moments and let us know what's happening here in June with that, with that festival that's actually growing here in Cumberland. It's a good thing.
Yeah, so I, I reached out to you guys a few months ago. Like Mr. Everly said, the festival's growing incredibly. We were kind of growing a little bit faster than what we had anticipated. And as our attendees grow, so do our costs. So that's basically what, what I was asking for the funding for, logistical costs such as porta-pots, facility needs, you know, like canopies and things like that. You know, our overhead just keeps getting bigger and bigger, which is a good thing. We just asked for a little assistance to kind of withstand that, that growth. Currently, we've sold about 1,200 tickets. We're a month out. We've sold tickets in 11 states, not including DC.
Wow.
The furthest of which is Texas. So we're pulling people, of, of the tickets that we've sold online, is how I can actually track the statistics, 44% of them are coming from without, or outside of a 30-mile radius of the city of Cumberland. So we're, we're drawing people to, to the, to the area, and that's the, that's the name of the game, that's what we want to do. But I just wanted to, to thank you guys as well. I invite you all to come to the wing-off and support it. It's 100% of the profits go to, not only the J.C.'s, but we divvy it out to, there's nine other charities involved this year that we're going to be giving donations to as well. So 100% of the profits go back into the community. It's a great event, it's a fun time, we have great music lined up. So I appreciate your support, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Only question I have, where's the product for us to taste here? Brought a rather large platter.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't do anything with the wings, so that's one thing, is it was actually originally created to give a platform for our local vendors to kind of display their, their product. And, and so, I mean, you can go anywhere on any night of the week, and there's a wing night somewhere. So we have a lot of different great wings here, and, and me personally, it's starting to show, but I love wings. A little too much.
Well, we would be all up for a wing night here. Like a Thursday night around 5:30 or 7:00.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea, too. But, but yeah, so that's basically, we wanted to kind of, to showcase our, our local different flavors of wings, and it's gotten pretty cool. We've got, we've got a lot of outreach also from vendors, too. A few years ago, we had someone, some folks from Syracuse come down and cook wings in the contest. So it's, the outreach of it is really overwhelming, and, and I, it's, it's just such an awesome event that we were able to keep affordable through donations such as this. So, and, and that's what we want to do. We wanted to keep it a community-oriented event, that we can keep our ticket cost, our ticket costs down to the patrons, and, you know, but still give them a quality, you know, time, so.
Well, Matt, it's great to see Canal Place being used for
Yes.
something like this.
Yes.
As, as it's intended, and
Yep.
You know, we, we appreciate what you do in the community, and I, I gotta give you a shameless plug for, for the Manufacturing Roundtable last week. I know you were very involved in that, and that took place out at Hunter Douglas, and that was great to have all of these industry partners in the county, just, you know, they even said, "We don't get in the same room all the time," and, and they, they have similar challenges, and
That's true.
it was, it was great.
Yeah, not to get off topic, but that, hopefully we can grow that and, and make that definitely worthwhile for, it's, it was a great forum, I think, for you and the manufacturers as well. So you will all be on the email list for that for the next time, I think June 22nd, after the wing-off is our slated date for the next roundtable.
There will be wings at the roundtable?
I'll bring the leftovers.
That would increase attendance, I think, yeah.
Okay, I'll be sure to put that in the invitation.
A trade.
Okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Mr. Rudd.
Yes, as you all know, of course, the county was sued because of the Ten Commandments by Mr. Jeff Davis, and my assistant, Mr. Levin, and myself, primarily Mr. Levin, have been vetting various organizations around the country who are willing to provide a defense to Allegheny County at no cost. And they're from far away as Arizona and Texas and Virginia and one in DC. We've been able to narrow it down to one entity that we feel very confident can do an excellent job for us. It's at no cost, it's pro bono, no cost for expenses, nothing. In fact, it's interesting, two of these entities were actually going to use the same DC law firm to actually do the defense. So it's, there's a lot of this goes on, and these people all know each other in the same kind of circles. But in any event, we're very confident this is an organization, actually, it's out of, it's a foundation out of Arizona, but they will be retaining the law firm in DC, which is well-known in the area of First Amendment. Once again, at no cost, they are prepared to file an answer in a timely manner for us. We've looked at the retainer agreement, there is absolutely no cost. In fact, what distinguished them from another entity was that if for some reason we backed out or chose other lawyers, we actually had to pay them legal fees based on some astronomical rate. So these, this entity, we're comfortable, we have our best interest at stake. One of the things, they basically control the message, that is, any press releases, whatever will be issued by them, because what is said may in fact affect our ability or success in being able to defend what you all want to do. So what I would like today is authority to have a retainer agreement approved by the board with, with Commissioner Shade signing it. Once that's done, I'm sure there'll be an official press release put out by them, a joint press release identifying who they are and what's going on, and what's, what's the status of the case, so.
Great.
Go.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
All righty.
Commissioner Valentine.
Okay, just something real quick. First of all, I'd like to introduce Delegate Buckle, who snuck in here a few moments ago. Typical politician makes a late entrance, everybody can see him, say, "Ah, there's Mr. Buckle."
I was here to say the pledge of allegiance.
Dave's gonna get you.
Delegate Buckle was able to get a bill through the legislature this year that is offering extra tax incentives for cybersecurity businesses and businesses in the biotech field to locate in four certain counties, one of those counties being Allegheny County, and knowing that Jake has had an interest in cybersecurity since the age of about three hours, I think.
That's right, yeah.
I thought we, we should be very proactive on this. So I started finding names and addresses for every cybersecurity firm in the state of Maryland at this point that I could find, and we want to expand this to Northern Virginia, Pennsylvania, wherever. Had staff draw up a letter. Jake rewrote portions of that letter, then I rewrote portions of Jake's letter, then Jake finishes it off again today. So it's been a true team effort, but we will be sending this letter out to numerous cybersecurity businesses very shortly. And the letter basically says, "We want to take this opportunity to briefly share some economic and business development items of interest that we are undertaking in Allegheny County. Whether in traditional manufacturing or specific sectors like cybersecurity, Allegheny County offers companies a broad array of resources to develop and grow. There is a wide variety of options in terms of available land, buildings, and a competitive and ready workforce can offer your company endless opportunities to prosper. Workforce training and readiness puts us at the forefront, as we are home to both Allegheny College of Maryland and Frostburg State University. ACM has recently initiated a cybersecurity program to train potential workers in this growing and important industry. The Opportunity Scholarship funded by the county commissioners allows county residents to acquire either a two-year or four-year degree from these campuses at little or no cost. FSU offers a four-year, regionally accredited university that can provide a company freshly educated employees with four-year degrees in many technology fields. In addition, HB 1168 was recently passed in the Maryland General Assembly. This legislation offers up to $500,000 in tax credits to cybersecurity companies that choose to locate in four select Maryland counties, including Allegheny County. Other financial incentives also exist in Allegheny County. Given Allegheny County's position geographically to many of the Mid-Atlantic's major cities, we feel we are an opportune place for cybersecurity company to locate and prosper long-term. We encourage you to visit or call upon the professional staff of Allegheny County Economic and Community Development to learn more about the exciting possibilities available to you and your company. We feel that, that these companies will be looking for someplace where they can get this, this tax credit. We want it to be the first to put something in their hands. And I truly feel because of the two campuses, the programs that ACM is offering, the programs that Frostburg's offering, we should be a little bit ahead of the game on this. So, gentlemen, if everybody's agreeable to this letter, we'll have staff finish it up, and we'll put the specific names of each company and contact person, and we'll get these letters in the air.
Great.
That is fantastic.
Commissioner Brody?
I just only have a, a couple of things, and I'm most certainly glad that you gentlemen would lead on that. I wish the federal government would have hired them two months ago when I went and did my income tax and found out that my social security number and stuff was hijacked through a cyber internet thief.
I'm only going to use it a couple of times.
You ain't gonna get much, I can tell you that. Because they left all the debt that's associated with such, but the next thing, I'm thankful to see Delegate Buckle and Delegate McKay here tonight. But just a little update from something we spoke about the last meeting with, with some economic development that's happening here, and we're having a little floodplain issues. Our Western Maryland representative, Mark Widmire, to the governor's office kind of took that bull by the horns for us, and tomorrow, we do have a meeting to hopefully get this under control. Delegate Buckle offered to throw his weight into, and I've promised Mark and Dave both that we'll give these guys a half hour to get this straightened out before we give them the, before we tell them we're going to issue the permit anyhow, gentlemen. So we'll, we'll play nice in the sandbox for one half hour, that's what we got. So we hope that they'll get it on, because we need both of these projects, very important Allegheny counties. That's all I have tonight, sir. Oh, I do have
One more quick thing, if you don't mind? I'd like to call Sheriff Robertson. Would you come up, please?
Oh, boy. While he's making his way to the podium, our newest board member to the Potomac Highlands Airport Authority is actually a recently retired Major Jimmy Powles from Maryland State Police, with, with Jimmy's knowledge of the aviation background and what Trooper Five means to us here, we're pleased to have him, so thank you.
Let's clear it away. We've got a presentation going on.
I ain't got the taser. Who's got the taser?
I'd like to apologize for taking your time in your, in your meeting, but this actually was requested about two and a half months ago. We can't print these things as fast as you all do. I can request a citation or a proclamation, but it takes a little longer for me to get them. What this is, is a, to the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office, be it known that on behalf of the citizens of this state, in recognition for a special tribute and your 225th anniversary of the Allegheny County Service Department, to celebrate the historic milestone honoring the long and distinguished record of service and integrity, in appreciation for your contribution to the residents of Allegheny County and to the people of Maryland and to the citizens, we join in expressing our great respect and admiration and sincere best wishes for continued success. We are pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation, and it's dated the 25th of April, which was the actual date, but as I said, we don't print them quite as fast. This is signed, of course, by the governor and lieutenant governor, and I'd like to present this to the sheriff. Thank you very much.
Did we get a picture of them, too, Brad?
Get over here, Jake.
This might end up on posters somewhere.
Don't want it. Don't want it.
It's going to end up in our county newsletter and on our website.
Set her alive.
We know how that'll be preferably wanted.
That's right.
Up to you, Jake. Sir?
Well, just a little bit of clarification, because, you know, it seems like the question is, how much have we cut the Board of Ed's budget this year? And the answer is none. We, we've actually increased it over $300,000, and we increased it last year by $400,000. So in two years, we're up $700,000, even when they're losing students, which, which that seems like it's a pretty fair deal to me. You know, we don't get a fair shake in the media on that. But I, I had the opportunity to go to Annapolis last week. The Board of Public Works actually approved an extra $3.5 million for, for the Allegheny High School project. And to see the state, you know, back in September, we, we were so short of funds, and then the state's come up with an extra $13 million, and we've come up with an extra $4 million to see that project become a reality, and it is a credit to our delegation to, to see them get those funds, and, and I appreciate all the hard work they did. But, you know, we're, we're all in this together, and I just appreciate a little bit of thanks for, for recognizing the budget realities that, that occur on all levels of local government. So, you know, our, our budget includes a small tax decrease, and there's not many governments that can say that this year, or that could say it the past couple of years. So I'm proud of that, and I, I think our funding under the Board of Ed is, is more than adequate. The, the other thing that I wanted to address is June 8th, we're going to be having a meeting with all the municipalities addressing blight. You know, that, that's something in our, our county that, that affects everyone. And so stay tuned to that, that, that's going to be a significant program that municipalities can use to, to really help address blight. So we're excited to see that start, start happening.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Taylor has signed up to speak.
Gentlemen, for the record, my name is Edward W. Taylor, Jr., addresses 400 South Allegheny Street, and I'm here tonight as president of the Cumberland Historic Cemetery Organization. Before I go any further, I want to thank you all for supporting, keeping the Ten Commandment Monument where it is in front of our Allegheny County Circuit Courthouse on Washington Street. And our organization, since 2004, when Dr. Davis originally asked it for it to be removed, and the Commissioners at that time did remove it for about a week and a half, it was our organization that held rallies and protests. WCVC was a great help with their on-air coverage of the events, we had several, to ask the Commissioners at that time to bring the monument back, and they did. Since that time, as you well know, 12 years, 13 years, Dr. Davis on numerous accounts has asked for that removal. Since 1983, our organization, we have erected and restored 893 monuments. These monuments, most of them are in Allegheny County, but they're as far away as Meconope, Florida. All types, all sizes, styles, artwork, and so forth. Monuments are part of our American culture, our Western culture. They're a permanent fixture, they're not to be removed. They tell the story of our nation. This monument, as you all well know, has been there since the 1950s. It's on a historic easement. Ninety-some percent of our population in Allegheny County, I think the Times News kind of covered that, want, wanted to stay there, as we as an organization do. This problem is brought up over and over and over by Dr. Davis, who seems to be obsessed on trying to destroy our American culture, our Western culture. Our judicial system is built on the precepts of the Ten Commandments, most attorneys should know that. And apparently, Dr. Davis just doesn't get the message. If he's offended of it, then don't look at it. The population wants it there, along, as I said, with our group. We are offering to the Commissioners, as an organization, to solve this problem once and for all. Many of our monuments, which are scattered everywhere, from large cemeteries to little corner places up in the woods, we hold the deeds to these sites, many of them, not all. We are asking if the Commissioners would like to donate four or five square feet of ground that monument sits on and donate it to the Cumberland Historic Cemetery Organization. We are incorporated as a private historical corporation, and we would have our attorney draw up a contract with the county promising that we would never remove the monument. And I think our record over the years speaks for that. And that is what I am here tonight to present to the Commissioners to possibly solve this issue, along with, thank God, all the legal help you're getting. So that is what I am offering tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
All right. Well, with that, we will be going to Thursday, June 2nd will be our next business meeting. That'll be the final reading of our budget, and when the Ten Commandments were, were being advised by legal counsel to, to direct all questions towards them till this case plays out. So with that, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.